Let's call our budget meeting to order. Let's have ourselves another roll call to make sure no one has slipped out. Madam Speaker. You can just look down the line if you remember. First guy in the end is Councilman Larson.
Councilman, Commissioner.
I am here.
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 Thank you, Vicki. So we are here on our final reading. There are a couple of things that we need to take care of. And are you asking us to not vote on this?
You could unless there's changes.
All right. So let's, yeah, let's, this is just for us. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to address right out of the gate. One is when we finish with the maintenance and Commissioners budgets, I thought maybe what we did was part of a somewhat of a reorganization. So I did reach out to County Attorney Scott Fird and try to get a little clarification on that. And I asked that he come here and he's here. Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Whitton.
So we discussed today, Scott, kind of again, the request for maintenance. So why don't you just kind of lay it out to us.
Okay. So Ray's primary budget is through LIT and on his designation, what we were, and then he has a few people that are in the Commissioners' General Fund, mostly custodians. The situation arose that we had an individual who's currently a facilities service assistant, put him, get his certification diploma for HVAC school. And so now he is doing HVAC work along with our other HVAC technician. And he has, and he's reducing our service calls and therefore some of our reliance on any outside contractors to do any of that work. So what we're attempting to do with this proposal was to reward that because he was frankly doing grounds work. And then this brought him up into being able to do the HVAC. So in an attempt to do that, and as we've been attempting to do with Ray's budget is keep him basically at the same number and within the LIT budget itself. So the proposal was to remove out of the Commissioners' General Fund the facilities service assistant, move that to the LIT budget, that position. As it stands before any raises or anything else, the 2019 numbers that was sitting at, that one of those positions was sitting at $37,834. That would move to the LIT budget under this proposal. The groundskeeper at $33,000 would move from the LIT budget to the General Fund. So the difference would be, would reduce the General Fund burden.
Okay.
And then we were proposing after that move to take him from $37,834 to $47,500. And that would be again, within the LIT budget, not a General Fund hit. So that was, that-
Then there was a requested increase to two.
So to go on, so then generally, we have a request for the custodians. We have three full-time custodians at $23,276. We are requesting to take them up to $27,300.
Thank you.
That would be a pay increase of $4,024 apiece. They are in the General Fund budget. We were also requesting an additional full-time custodian. And we would, and if that were to be approved, that would also be placed into the LIT budget itself, again, not a General Fund hit. And lastly, the final request was the raise to the, to the facilities administrative assistant, a special raise. And that was submitted from $28,392 to $38,392. And that was all of the, all of the requests in total. And on the LIT, if, if the-
If all of this stuff were granted, Vicki, what's the hit to the General Fund?
And that would, whatever the council chooses to do on the custodian raise, I, obviously, if it's a special raise beyond the other ones-
Whichever's higher, we're not getting involved.
Correct.
Well, we're calculating that to tell you that there's going to be a reduction in salaries of the General Fund, which is a slight decrease. We do have to calculate the additions of per and per.
I, so you want to raise up your assistant, your administrative assistant to $10,000? Is that what the request is?
Is that in line with job description changes or added responsibilities or?
I mean, it's in line with what she's doing, what the position does. But the position originally was part-time and it was moved full-time with no increase of pay. So I'm here today to get an increase of pay where it's fair for the amount of work that the position does.
So I'm probably not for that kind of a raise, but maybe something more, you know, yeah, half, take her to $32,000, $33,000, I don't know.
Yeah.
Half. Yeah. So what, so if your suggestion was-
So it would be $28,000 plus five would be half.
$33,000.
$33,000. That would be my, I could do that.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Do you want to take this in sections?
Yeah, just taking sections.
Okay. I'll move to approve that.
So we have a motion on the floor to take, a second to take her salary to $33,000. Any discussion on that?
And this is coming out of the LIT?
Correct.
How much have we increased the LIT budget then, under this part?
Well, we're not quite there yet.
Well, we're voting on an increase in LIT budget.
We are, but she's trying to figure that out. I don't want him to guess is what I'm telling you. Because that's a good question. Because even though it's not General Fund, we do have to keep an eye on LIT.
And I, depending on whether it's approved, an additional into LIT now, the next step would be to direct Vicki to whatever the, whatever has been added to the LIT under this request should be reduced from his building line item. So it will stay the same. Overall, the budgetary money that he has to work with the building, does that make sense? He has one large line item that all the building expenses come out of. We would reduce that. So if you did a $5,000 raise here, we could reduce that line by $5,000.
Does that make sense? We're not, so we're not taking the hit out, we're just moving the shit that chairs on the deck.
Correct. Same thing, same thing with the moving. If you approve the move of the technician, approve the raise, that additional money could come off that line also. And that one is more of a direct line. It's helping reduce some of our other costs and so therefore that's the underlying line.
I mean, with the team I have in place, I can reduce a lot of costs.
We heard that a couple of years ago, that's my question. We heard that when we first did this department. It was going to decrease all kinds of costs in the county, but-
And it has. It's contained. It's this money and been this money since we did it. So before, we were running at quite a lar, much larger clip. This is about $924,000 for, and that's the people and the spend.
Right.
And so we're under a million dollars a year and it, things have gotten under control. So I think we've turned that corner and that's why we're able to keep it here and it's not growing.
I don't know. I'd like to ask, the HVAC personally have now, I think his wages are equivalent or what to a union person?
Yes.
Is that right?
I'd have to look at what the technicians are. The technicians are getting paid 60, in 2019, they were paid, they're all a little different. They range from $57,800 to $66,500.
That's pretty absurd. Well, my, my point is you're, now we're hiring somebody to do part-time with the HVAC?
I'm just, I just transferred him from grounds to help with HVAC and general workers. It just makes more sense to utilize his skills and it's worked. I can show you trends, I can email these to you, that the last two years, we've had a lot of outsourcing with companies and this year, we've had very little. Just a, probably a handful, I might, you know, I can count probably two or three. So it's worked.
And this is, and this person exists and is already, is already on the payroll.
Right. You want him to, you're giving him a raise and something in the-
So let's, let's jump off this, so we have this motion for the increase in a second on the floor. Any questions about that?
We're talking about the administrative assistant.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that one's done. What do you want to tackle next?
So the HVAC guy, did he go to school on his own?
Yes.
We're basically rewarding a guy for getting, educating himself, which, your outside contractors have gone down because of this.
Is he satisfied with the increase you're proposing? Have you guys discussed that with him? I mean, if he's a full-fledged HVAC guy, he can make quite a bit more money than that. So is he-
I'll make the motion. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you vote Sylvia?
Yeah, just like Bob does.
Yes.
That was the increase for the facilities services assistant?
Yes.
Does that include moving the person to LIT out of the General Fund?
Oh, yeah, heck yeah. You okay with that, moving him into LIT? I mean, that's the idea.
That's the order of the deal, yeah.
Yeah. The answer was heck yeah. So what, what else do we have left here? We have-
Make the motion on the janitors getting a raise.
That's where Bob was so excited. Bob finally gets to jump on this.
Well, better we brought it up to get him to jump on it, so.
So Bob has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. What's left?
The request for a new full-time custodian at whatever pay you just set for those.
Out of?
LIT.
You understand they want another custodian in LIT?
Yeah, because they just lost one, but HVAC.
So what's your pleasure with the-
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'm, can I jump in there for a second?
Sure.
I'm going to circle back to the janitors. They're getting the raise.
Custodian.
I'm sorry. Maintenance worker.
Maintenance technician.
They're getting this raise and not the 3%.
That's correct. Whichever's higher, they get.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What's next? Is that it?
Just a direction to the auditor that whatever we've added to LIT from these motions be reduced from the larger line item.
It's so directed. Do you understand that?
And we're moving the groundskeeper from LIT to General Fund.
Correct.
Okay.
We're going to have to work on this.
I understand. I understand.
Very good.
You're going to need that for our final reading, aren't you?
Yes, we are.
So we're going to take a few minutes for you to get that together here in just a minute, but I have a feeling there'll be other things. So, um, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Ray.
Is there anything else that we wish to address before we direct the auditor to give us final reading?
I would like to bring up the coroner's request.
Go ahead.
Cindy? As, at the last meeting, we asked her to take another look at what her initial proposal was. And I think she has done that and is prepared to talk about it. So what have you done?
Thanks for letting me do that, first off. What I'd like to do is, our, my deputies are paid salary right now and the chief deputy coroner, so I'd like to leave that in place. I would like each deputy to be compensated for scene calls or information calls. So that would be $50 per scene call when they are on their 12-hour shift. And then that means that they would be going out to the scene to investigate a case. I'd like to have them be paid $25 per information phone call. Sometimes we can handle all of this over the phone and we don't have to go out to the scene, but we still have to do somewhat of an investigation in order to release the body. We've averaged between 2017 and 2018, we've averaged 225 scene calls. Times $50 per call would be $11,250. Between 2017 and 2018, we averaged 206 information calls. Times $25 per call would be $5,150. It's hard to estimate each year how many calls we're going to have, obviously. So I'd like to use the number for 20, the year 2020. 250 scene calls and 225 information calls. And then that's a total of $18,125. And I'm still, would really like to request the ability to have two slots to hire two deputies. One of our deputies right now was deployed to Kuwait, so I have to have that job open for him in March if he wants it back. I think this would be more efficient for our-
Thank you, Cindy. So Vicki, I'd ask you to run several scenarios on this. What would the hit be with two deputies in her request, one deputy in her request and no new deputy in her request? Do you have those?
Her request took, would total, if you include the rate of 3%, about $36,413,000 with the calls. If we just had one deputy with the 3% raise, the total is $27,269. And zero deputies, just the calls, is $18,125,000.
Okay. Sorry, Cindy. I wanted to get that. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. What, anybody want to take any action on this request?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, we move forward with, with the coroner's request to the scene call, paying the deputies as they go out to individual scenes and for the information calls that she, she has suggested, to give them a per, per call fee in addition to their salary. And I think the issue that Cindy rightfully brought up previously was that as the deputies are on call, if they don't have any calls, it's a great night and they got the good shift. If you happen to be on call where there are several instances where you have to respond, then you are no doubt adding to the workload extensively during your shift and after by working on, essentially on your own time to get paperwork filled out, fielding calls and so forth. So I would, my proposal is this, to honor the, the stipend, I'll call it, per call fee that she is suggesting, keeping the deputies' salaries the same, along with the 3% increase that we're talking about. And rather than adding two deputies, I would, my motion would be adding one deputy coroner to her payroll.
That's the $27,269.
Yes.
How do we budget? We don't have a line item for per calls. We don't have-
I have a question for you. How, there's no-
There's a lot of-
I was asking how we would pay per calls if we don't have a line item or something.
Because it's compensation, it would be in the salary line item or hourly, or we could create another $1,000 line. Like you would have to put in the form and our time and attendance whenever we're calling.
Right.
The public pay.
So based on what you just said, that 250 calls is five a week?
I'm sorry, what? I-
Five a week is-
Yeah. That'd be correct, right? Five a week.
Yeah, average, yeah.
So the, the question I also have is, is that is there a specific time, I guess, that do we have, where there'd be somebody cherry picking the extra fees all the time if they knew that they were working this particular shift or if somebody was working overtime on those shifts?
I would have to approve that.
Do you, do you have a set schedule? Or do you rotate, you know, who's on call? How does it work?
What our deputies do is they put in their availability before each month.
Do you fill the gaps in when they're not available?
Yeah, I have to. And then my secretary, she is also a deputy coroner, but there's no way she has been compensated in the past years for going out on a call or having to be on call and do a 12-hour shift. So this would give me the ability, if she did have to fill in and she did get a call, I could compensate her.
Do you schedule yourself with the rest of them?
Mm-hmm.
So you take a shift whenever, okay.
How many calls have you gone out on last year? Just curious. Oh, well, yeah.
This year? Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
Yeah, well, last month I had six 12-hour shifts.
I guess I have one other question, not to nitpick this, but this is an increase and a sizable one if you make several of these calls. What, what if we reduce that to like half that amount this year and gave you the additional person that you're looking for, but weren't, weren't looking at that full $18,000 or $19,000, maybe half of that amount, and then gave you the additional officer? Would that be something that would still function? And see how this works? Because we're creating a whole other can of worms by setting something aside an hour and having another management issue.
Now, keep, keep in mind, I mean, this is 50 per scene calls, so it's a deputy coroner going out on a call of a death scene. And to help compensate for that, it's $50 per scene call.
So there's a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
I didn't hear a motion. I didn't have, didn't have a second. We were having, I'll, I'll make the second, just so we can finish this discussion.
Is there any other discussion? Let's get a roll call.
Councilman Graff.
No.
Councilman Judge.
Yes.
Councilman Larson.
No.
Councilman Popar.
No.
Councilman Reed.
No.
Councilman Smith.
No.
And Councilman Webber.
No. Any other motions?
I'd still like to address this.
Sure.
I, man, explanation of the additional person? Is that just to fill that occupation that's done? I mean, the person that was filling that position, are we holding that position and then filling that position is what we'd be doing by adding another person?
Adding another person would give, if one of my deputies gets hurt, if one of my deputies has a family emergency and has to have a leave of absence, I only have eight deputies. So that person's off the schedule. So everybody else has to add in more shifts out of their time in the month. And the problem I have is all of my deputies have other full-time jobs.
Where, where would you fit in that?
So this would-
Like, wouldn't you pick up a little bit of that slot too then, or no?
Right, yes, I would. But I also have a full-time job, so it's just, you can't believe, but-
Any other questions? Can I get a motion of some sort?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the additional individual one salary and reduce that additional per DM or whatever you want to give to half of what she requested.
So it would be $25 and $12.50?
Right.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
You sure can.
You, how many, you have eight right now?
Mm-hmm.
Does that include the guy in Kuwait?
No. How many slots do you have?
Oh, you have nine slots.
Yeah.
You have nine slots.
And I can't, I can't hire anybody in level, you know.
The question you asked was, does the eight include a guy in, or assume it's a woman, in Kuwait?
Yes.
She's saying you have nine slots. So you have nine slots?
No, I have eight. I, I have somebody in his slot right now. So when he comes back in March, I'll have to terminate somebody to give him back his job.
How many slots does she have? Nine?
Eight deputy coroner becomes one chief deputy coroner, so that's around the number of nine.
Okay. There's a motion and a second for any other discussion.
So we want to go to 10? Plus her.
Well, the nine and-
Well, I don't know what we want to do. We haven't had the-
No, I mean, that's a motion. We're going to go to 10?
That's her.
And when the person from Kuwait comes back, person, you know, as I said.
We have to hold that position up, right? We have to hold one position up.
All right, so we've got the motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Judge.
Yes.
Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Popar.
Yes.
Councilman David.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
No.
Councilman Whitton.
No.
And Councilman Graff.
No.
Fast.
So put that, put those numbers in. Okay. So just to clarify that, to add one additional deputy coroner, and that is to cut the funding for the calls in half.
So that would be nine deputy coroners, one chief deputy coroner?
Right. One secretary and one, well, we have to add the, or the leadership, and then one coroner.
Okay.
Got that, Vicki? You have, we clear?
Yes. I think we have it. Coroner, secretary, chief deputy coroner, and then now we're moving to-
Nine deputy coroners.
Nine.
Okay.
And my no vote was I was inclined to either give you the person or the, or the deputy. I was unsure of which. I was not crazy with both, but I understand. Okay, that's awesome. Anything else?
Aye.
Thanks, Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you for making it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else this board needs to address?
I think I might want to discuss the Recorder's-
Okay.
Perpetuation Fund.
Bob, you've had a lot of conversation about the Recorder's Fund. Was there anything that you wanted to address or just?
Yeah. It appears in the Recorder's sitting out in the audience, there's been a lot of discussion about first perpetuation fund and the General Fund and helping the General Fund, and it seems like this could be real honest. Chuck, you don't want to do anything.
No, I, that's not true. I just, I have an offer for you.
Maybe I haven't come up?
Yes.
You have an offer? I didn't hear them.
Come on, Chuck.
We got a letter.
So the last thing that we got was a letter indicating just kind of your plans with the perpetuation fund, I think.
Right, and I'm still wanting to move forward with that, but I do have an offer for you guys. In this, like we were talking before, the spirit of cooperation. One of the things that I would like to kind of help pitch in with as far as, you know, getting everybody raises this year, is making an offer to you guys to give you, you know, for raises, $50,000 out of the perpetuation fund. I'm willing to sign the affidavit on it. You just have to create the ordinance, which I'm sure Harold could do. That's about one and a half salary positions in my office. So that was, I mean, you can, obviously, I think everybody's got a copy of what the, what my goals were, to take the office in that direction, but I would like to at least extend it all, all our friends to you guys and see if that would help with giving county employees raises. giving, uh, county employees raises. What, uh- I'm sorry if I ever made it sound like I wasn't.
Oh, that's all right. So you've heard the recorders', uh, offer and suggestion?
I was thinking a little bit more.
What, uh, what's your pleasure with this? Can I get some form of a motion? Anyone?
I'd make a motion that we accept the fifty thousand dollars.
Second. We have a motion to second to, uh, I want to make sure I couch this motion correctly, to, uh, move fifty thousand, uh, move fifty thousand into the perpetuation fund, correct? Uh, Vicki, is that how we do that? Reduce the general fund fifty thousand, move it into the-
But we'll, we'll have to get it.
You have the other thing that you're going to do, and, you know, like you've addressed already, and-
Yep.
Which was we were just talking about, the timing and the timeline, and we can do it.
Okay.
Um, so, and Harold's ready for, ready for action. Okay.
Yes.
He's ready to pounce and he can get a motion. Um, so, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Count Number Barbara.
No.
Count Number Popper.
No.
Count Number Reva.
No.
Come on, God.
Count Number Sin.
Yes.
Count Number Whitton.
Yes.
Count Number Graham.
No.
And Count Number Jeff.
Yes.
The, uh, three to four, three judges. Three thousand four.
Okay.
Any other motions?
Well, could you refresh my memory, Vicki? What does that fund bring in every month? Do you guys know?
It's thirty, exactly. It's about thirty, three to thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
Approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year, of which, and we also pay the equal amount back to the general fund. I've got a recorder collections report I'd be happy to share with the council. It shows where all, all recording fees go. We also, last year, for example, year two thousand eighteen, a hundred, over a hundred and fifteen thousand went to the surveyor's perpetuation fund. Recording fees don't just stay in the perpetuation fund, folks, it does get separated out quite a bit, so, just wanted to state that.
Well, that, no, that's true, John, and-
I'll have a copy of the recorder.
No, 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 that's fine. You, you're, so, but either way, you still have seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars at this moment in time. I'll make a motion that, I want to be a hundred, but I don't think it'll fly, so I'm going to ask for seventy-five thousand out of the general fund to help offset the cost.
Second, I motion.
Can I hear from the recorder?
And I'm basing that on two months receipts.
Chuck, you hear the motion.
Can we make that work, Chuck?
In the spirit of cooperation. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Count Number Popper.
Yes.
Count Number Reva.
Yes.
Count Number Sin.
Yes.
Count Number Whitton.
Yes.
Count Number Graham.
Yes.
Count Number Jeff.
Yes.
And Count Number White.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chuck.
We were talking about the timeline, we, I mean, with this timeline and place.
We got to go fast.
There are going to be additional budget, I mean, for example, contractual will go up significantly for next year. My only reason I'm speaking on behalf of the office is because I'm the one who's been crunching the numbers somewhat, Mr. Recorder asking me to do that. And I guess probably from the familiarity of having been the recorder for the past eight years. But, um, do we have to do anything with our budget, because the numbers that are there now are not going to be the numbers that we're going to require for next year as far as, for example, these two projects. What would you prefer we do? That's something Mike and I both asked that question, because we were, I was wondering if you had these projects scheduled, why they weren't part of your, part of our budget? We approved their, but, you know what I'm saying?
You like the perpetuation budget?
Yeah.
You know, so here's the thing, um, that, it's, it's, it's a funny creature in the sense that, uh, they don't necessarily have to come in front of us to spend money on that fund. I appreciate that you do, because we kind of want to keep track of what's going on and be part of it, but, so I don't know that we need to do anything with that.
Do we have to appropriate it?
I don't think so.
You're just forewarning us, John, that there's, that's going to change us.
I don't think so, yes.
I don't think so, here.
I don't, I don't, I do not believe so.
Like, the, just, just as a previous example, the computer upgrade, I mean-
And I don't think we're not encouraging you guys to do those projects. We would just ask that you would be diligent and maybe researching and-
We almost think it's a pretty good, I, I think it's a pretty good idea-
Right.
-that you guys do come to us with your expenditures out of that fund, understanding you don't need to, just simply because if something comes up and we do need to do something else.
And I mentioned that in the last meeting, but I, I believe in that transparency that's been going on. Um, I, I-
We're going out.
I know that the recorder's office does that, but I think it's important that you guys know what's going on, uh, just so you know what's going on.
Yeah, and, and by the way, I don't have any, I've read your letters, we've talked, I, there's nothing you guys have planned that I don't think is a good thing that you're doing. I mean, I, we've talked about that, uh, so we're with you on that.
A question I might have, uh, as far as these projects, which, um, you know, are generally outlined here on this page, um, does that require any sort of involvement from the commissioner's office? If not, some sort of approval, maybe contract signing, or who engages or enters into contracts for these particular projects?
The bookbinding, well, I don't know.
I think the commission, I, I think, yeah, I think it probably requires the commissioners to approve the contracts. I do think that. This, because the statute talks about the expenditure of the money. It doesn't, it doesn't really address, you know, them having, you know, contractability.
I, I don't think they can sign the contract, no.
Not that I think they want to.
Right.
But-
If somebody's willing to sign the contracts for us, that's even better.
I think he probably wants to.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, okay. So we've had a vote on this, right?
Yep.
Anything else?
You got that, Vicki?
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so-
Good luck with the vinegar.
Oh, Bob, you just had it away. Uh, is there anything else we wish to address tonight?
Yep, we only, are we doing this, are we adopting a salary arrangement, council president?
I don't think we want to, because I think-
We can't.
Okay.
We changed all this.
Oh, I think, I told her earlier, okay.
The only thing I wanted to throw out on the table was, in the salary ordinance, which we're not adopting, is giving them the language to hire up to. Make it crystal clear that if somebody wants to hire somebody less than the stated pay, they have that ability with a 140 footer, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so-
There's a lot of miscommunication about-
The, the point is, if we approve a salary ordinance for a position, that person vacates, they hire somebody new. They don't have to hire them at that position. They can hire them up to that position. Is that something that you would like for us to address in the salary ordinance, or would you like for us to do something?
It should be in the salary ordinance.
Put her in. Done. Put her in.
I've already talked to State Board about what we need to do.
Perfect.
The mechanism needs to be made clear.
So the salary ordinance that you have, please review it, and you know that the areas that you changed tonight, we will change and we'll add that.
All right, so, how long will it take you now to put in the numbers for final reading? Because that's happening tonight.
We, we, we have to adjust per, by, so that's going to-
How long will that take you?
Pizza?
It's, it'll take fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. We're going to be here for fifteen minutes.
Wait a minute. Hold on.
Okay. I don't know what it was for you.
Oh, yeah.
Fine, fine. One counsel, you don't believe in perpetuation. You want to call me a liar? Oh, yeah, that one. You never lie, one. You're a real good liar. You sound like my ex-wife. I haven't authorized anything to hit someone after this.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Yeah, that's cute. Anyone older than anybody ever. Yeah. You can't script this stuff, man. Oh, you suck, my man. Quiet, huh?
I, I thought he was going, I thought, he said it, he said it ten times, and he's going, and I was going to miss, probably would have missed it. So you didn't get it.
What is it? First thing. So all the purposes of perpetuation. This was, is every position. Okay. Why did they have to call this? Oh, okay. Yeah, no, this is down. Okay. That's another dollar. Take care of them. I'm checking out the general fund, perpetuation. So how does that give you money? Okay, so you take the money out of perpetuation fund, you have a raise, you're going to-
What was it, uh, they were asking for?
Were, were there any other parties that you did with perpetuation fund, that you gave, you have any raise whatsoever?
Yeah, we still, yeah.
So it's the capital, the government, the general fund. What perpetuation fund were they giving or am I? Oh, well, all right. All right, thanks. Okay. Oh. Hey, Charlie, you got any more water? Yeah, you want a cold one? Yes. Well, I mean, that's the thing that- All right.
This one's very special, very special. He's the only one that can speak this. Five stack.
So Sylvia, anything going on? Everything good?
Yep.
Family wise?
We're good.
Her breath.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
The wear stuff.
Always want to hear.
Good, good, good.
Uh, but general fund, we-
Once again, saying, say, we- And Jay is a fan.
Oh, you went to where, oh, you, he-
And I said, you're lying on your own.
Could he even keep it together? I mean, oh, did he? Okay.
He really did.
Okay.
Everybody checked in?
I don't want to.
I was going for a hundred. Right.
It's fifteen minutes.
But we just, we get, you know. Seven forty-seven thousand dollars.
What?
It-
Yeah, somebody tried to do it.
Yeah, right.
I, I, I was down and, I mean, I-
And the question.
I, I, I have ten.
And every year, we're like, yeah, they all go to the flat, like, you, they were there, like the green light, the corner. Everybody else, five, five, six, seven, eight.
I wasn't.
You know, they, they, it can be, it can, yeah, one of those things.
Well, we only go to the- Well, I got my, my, uh, my, my son.
Well, finally, well, finally.
Well, I mean, I, I-
Well, that's why I heard her call.
She found out.
We think, always I was, I thought she did, but like, certainly, but she said, yeah.
He was late getting home, and he, he was, he had a shower, and he was all, and he was just like, very, and he got to the shower, and he, and he-
I mean, was it the next morning, or was it ninety? Okay, okay, okay.
Phil, this is a list of all of the budgets you can adopt, um, the surveyor perpetuation, I'm, I'm sorry, the, um, recorder perpetuation, which we advertised high enough.
Okay, good.
Oh, wait, let me double check that. Oh, okay, I was looking at this number, I'm sorry. So you may not be able to adapt it, but.
Okay.
But these are the totals.
Okay.
If you can't go, if you can't officially adopt it, you just will have to come back for an addition. It's not a big deal.
Okay.
But these are the totals, so I don't know if we should read them, or if Dan should say as reference by.
Yeah.
The meeting for those.
I'll tell you. Don't be, tell me.
I can't, um. So, we have this total of all the budgets that you would be adapting, so should we read them? Or?
Here are the odds.
I believe we should.
Then read them, then.
Do you want to read them?
I can all read them. Give them to me.
Now, if any are above the advertised amount, that's okay. We will come back for.
You have, just tell me what I got, I got to read the budget and the amount.
General fund?
Yes.
It's, it's like on the next line, that's just.
Why do you do it that way? Okay. Alright, give it to me.
And then you go past the sign, the budget adoption, so you have to turn that into a fake.
Now, I don't want to finish it all night, I want to drag this out.
It was fun.
Yeah.
It's a dreamy.
Almost too easy.
I know, I was in the room with King Kong back then.
Well, it doesn't also need to blur.
I'm not sure, I don't know.
I know, I.
I'm good, huh?
Yeah. What do you think?
It was fair.
How'd you break them? I should have said, with the fifty, I said.
It's not hot, it's me, I don't want to be.
You ready? Where's Cindy?
We can't, not at all.
Right? You want to come to us? So, Vicky, when do you want us to do the salary ordinance? At our next meeting is on, you'll have everything ready and.
Oh, you do that? You're young tonight.
I understand. Okay, don't, can you do it now? No, because she doesn't have the numbers. Okay. We say, I think we have our final numbers. Here we go. One thousand general fund, forty-one million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety. Accident report, eleven oh one, five thousand. Lit, eleven twelve, previously seated. Six million, four oh eight, seven ninety-nine. Clerk perpetual, ninety-eight thousand, nine, eight hundred and ninety-nine. County corrections, eleven twenty-two, one hundred and forty-nine thousand. Cume Bridge, three six, nine eight, six twenty-seven. Cume Bridge cap development, three, two two, four oh, eight oh nine. Emergency medical, fund eleven fifty-one, seventy-five thousand. Emergency plan, eighteen thousand. County extraction, five thousand. Firearms training, eighty-five thousand. Health, two million, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five. Local health, Maine, ninety-two thousand, seven ten. Local roads and streets, one million, six twenty-five thousand. Medical inmates, twenty-three thousand, one hundred. Eleven seventy-six highway fund, five million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Eleven seventy-nine park operating, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five eighty-four. Eleven eighty-plan commission, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six thirteen. Auto plat map, thirty-two thousand. Eleven eighty-two stormwater fund, three million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight eighty-two. Eleven eighty-eight reassessment, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight fourteen. Eleven eighty-nine, uh, recorder perpetuation, three oh one, oh one seven. Eleven ninety-one riverboat money, four oh seven, two thirty-nine. Eleven ninety-two sex violent offenders, twenty-three thousand, one sixty-five. Eleven ninety-eight sheriff pension fund, two hundred and fifty thousand. Twelve hundred public defender, a hundred and four thousand. Surveyor perpetuation fund, twelve oh two, two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. Twelve oh six tobacco fund, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten. Twelve oh seven unsafe building, a hundred thousand. Twelve oh eight vehicle inspection, five thousand. Twelve sixteen auto non-reverting, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, four thirty-eight. Twelve twenty-one house substance, forty thousand. Twelve twenty-two statewide, nine one one, two million, four ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. Two thousand adult probation, sixty thousand. Twenty fifty juvenile probation ad fee, twenty thousand, five five four. Twenty one oh one adult probation sup, five oh four thousand, four fifty-four. Twenty one oh two adult pro sup and abuse, hundred and six thousand, one oh five. Twenty one oh three adult, uh, pre-trial services, one forty-one, eight seven seven. Twenty one fifty juvenile probation sup, uh, form, one oh four, three seventy-nine. Twenty two, uh, hundred PCA DRF, seven thousand, seven twenty-six. Twenty five oh one county user fee prosecutor for, three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight dollars. Twenty five oh three county user fee pre-trial, ninety-five thousand, six twenty-one. Twenty five oh four county user sheriff continuing ad, thirty thousand. Twenty five oh five county user fee sheriff, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-four. Twenty five oh six county user fee jury fund, seventy thousand. Twenty five oh seven county user fee prosecutor check to for, five thousand. Twenty seven hundred drain maintenance, nine hundred thousand. Four zero zero five, uh, Port County Expo, six hundred, one thousand, seven forty-four. Four thousand seven animal shelter fees, uh, for the shelter, ninety-nine thousand, three sixty-nine. Four thousand eight animal shelter sup, one hundred and twelve thousand, two sixty. Four zero zero nine animal control fee, uh, sixty-five thousand, five oh seven. Four zero one zero drug task force, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two sixty-one. Four zero one seven garage fund, fourteen thousand, five hundred. Four zero two zero district one task force fund EMA, thirty-one thousand. Forty one oh six wildlife management donation, twenty-four, two hundred. Moving along, sheriff donation, forty-six thousand. Overweight vehicles sheriff, twenty-seven thousand, six seventy. Forty two oh two overweight vehicles highway, fifty thousand. Forty six hundred debt funds, two billion, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. Forty eight oh one county revenue bond project fund, nine million. Forty eight oh two stormwater construction fund, thirteen million, three hundred thousand. Forty nine oh one hospital liability fund, fifty thousand. Forty nine oh two hospital interest, one seventy-five thousand. Forty nine oh three hospital sale proceeds, six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Forty nine oh six cable franchise, one million, one hundred thousand. Forty nine oh seven public safety, two sixty-three thousand, two hundred. Forty nine oh eight videotape fee, ten thousand. Forty nine ten photo duplicate, eleven thousand. Forty nine eleven inmate processing fee, one hundred and thirteen thousand. Forty nine fifteen MOH management, five hundred and sixteen thousand, nine oh five. Forty nine sixteen JDC service fee codes fund, eighty-four thousand, five ninety-three. Excuse me, four nine two two foundation budget fund, four million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Four nine two three port school resource offices, two hundred and four thousand, three sixty-five. Forty nine twenty-four virtual pathways agreement, twenty-four five. Forty nine twenty-five Port County Sheriff Highway interdiction, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Eight zero nine nine prosecutor PCA, uh, ten thousand. Eight one one two domestic violence, a hundred and forty thousand. Eight one one three stop grant, uh, thirty-one thousand, one ten. Eight one one five scat grant, eight thousand. Eight one one eight sheriff DEA proceeds, one eighty-five thousand. Eight one four one family and child grant, sixteen thousand, one forty-eight. Eighty three hundred MOH IAC grant, nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. Eight eight nine five general for the incentive, ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ten. Eight eight nine seven, uh, prosecutor new, four D, one hundred and nineteen thousand, four oh five. Eight eight, uh, nine nine clerk, uh, four D, ninety-three thousand, eight seventy-nine. Ninety one oh eight court, uh, INT grant, nine thousand. Ninety one one three family court donation, ten thousand, seven sixty-five. Nine one one four OWI fatal drugs, uh, six 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 one. Nine one six two adults comm corrections, nine, two three five, uh, four six nine. Nine one six three, uh, courts, uh, community corrections, eight one, five seven two. Nine one six four adult probation CC pre-trial, seventy-one thousand, five seventeen. Ninety four hundred LRNB mask grant, one million. Nine 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 one special airport general, uh, one million, four hundred thousand, three hundred and twelve. Nine 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 two special airport cum, cumulative building, three three eight, five five five. Nine 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 three special RWRD waste management, one million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Nine 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 four special RWRD capital, twenty-five thousand. Nine 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 five special Westport Tonsic general, one thirty-four hundred. Nine 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 spit six special West Port Tonsic fire, seventy-nine nine. Uh, nine 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 seven special PCC RVC, uh, tourism, two, two million, forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. Have I missed any, Vicky? That is our, uh, third reading, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Can I get a roll call on third reading, please?
Captain Johnson?
Yes.
Captain Johnson?
Yes. Yes.
Captain Johnson Graham?
Yes.
Captain Captain Johnson?
Yes.
Captain Johnson Bartison?
Yes.
And Captain Johnson Capra?
Hello.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our final reading and concludes our meeting for the evening, so we will address the, when you get all the numbers in there on the salary ordinance, we will have it on our agenda for our next meeting. Uh, Vicky, if you have any questions, please reach out to me and we will work through this.
I'll make a motion to Richard.
We have a motion, is your second motion?
That's it.
Second, all in favor of Richard, say the number, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose.